Call this regular meeting of the Southwest Looking Local Board of Education to order. It is Thursday, June the 18th at 7:00 PM. We'd like to recognize both our visitors here and online. If you would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hello, we're the Walk into Memorial High School Student Council and we are here to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Mr. Jones, can you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent?
Here.
Mr. Zani?
Here.
Mrs. Dingle?
Here, we have a quorum, we can continue. Need a motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Dingle?
Yes. That passes. We have presentations. Is that you, Mrs. Perkins?
Yes, so the document attached is our annual presentation of our bullying restraint and exclusion report. So numbers are in there. If you have a specific question that I cannot answer, I will get it for you from one of our administrators who are here.
I'm surprised to see the numbers go up in the middle school and high school without a whole quarter of school.
I think it speaks to some of the additional trainings program we'll be doing in the fall. Hopefully.
Can't, is it? Actually went down.
I don't know what else to question.
Yeah, it did, it went down in the high school, yeah. Didn't look at that.
Not the middle school.
Been at the middle school, yeah. Is there a way that we can get a comparison from a couple of previous years of training? Just so we can see if training is working, not working, minimally working.
Education is working.
Wondering if it would help to see this data by grade level, year to year.
Yeah, yeah, that might be, that might also, yeah.
You know, so if you're seeing, if we're seeing that it's all the sixth grade and then it all moves to the seventh grade, we know that not, that it's just basically the same group of kids.
Yeah, traveling or moving.
If it's traveling or moving, yes.
Where to put our resources?
Well, where to put our resources back.
Put extra resources.
Yes.
I'll find out after we collect my individual grades.
I would guess that's the case.
And then we'll get a comparison report to send it to you so you can take a look at.
Yeah.
And then we'll have that a few additional questions.
Perfect.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Anybody else, any other questions? Okay. Alright, we have approval of the May 21st, 2020. We need a motion to approve the minutes of the task.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any discussion on those? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Dingle?
Yes. Motion passes. Financial report. Need a motion to approve the finance, financial report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Jones?
Looking back at your executive summary for the month end, May 31st. Fairly routine month. Basically, we saw our first school foundation reduction, about $238,000. Either state sources look higher. Year-to-date, you know, I mean, for the month, that's where Mr. Homestead wrote back money we were expecting in April, we received in May. So, year-to-date, we're down $238,000, which is recovered some of the $284,000 because we were heading a little bit, so. Year-to-date, we're still $527,000 higher than we anticipated in revenue. And our expenditure of $213,000 less than we expected. So we're running, we are still running better than we anticipated. Even with another half million dollars coming out, if this carries on, we'll still end up with a positive cash flow. So we may be able to absorb big cuts by the end of the year.
This year.
This year. Next year will be, I have no idea, we're gonna find out. But we've got like two weeks till the next school, next calendar year, fiscal year. And still haven't heard what states want to do next year for anything. Have you heard any cases by foundation-wise?
No, we have a conference call next Thursday with Mark Fraser, the representative. How about that?
That's what I was gonna ask, have we spoke to any legislature about how we were disproportionately used?
Yes, I spoke to Mark Weekly.
Okay.
As well as Granville, because they took a pretty large hit as well. So Jeff and I have been speaking, and then we've both been speaking with Mark. And then we have a conference call with other entities as well, next Thursday morning.
I saw kind of a blurb from Olandangie, who had originally been hit pretty heavily as well. And they were thanking their legislators for doing some work to.
It didn't get passed, though.
Oh, it didn't get passed, okay, that's my mistake.
Unfortunately, I was prematurely excited because I thought it would also help us initially, as Mark said. But they came in at 6% reduction, and we only had a 5% reduction. And that was what the proposal was because of the cost of, they couldn't afford what it would cost to go down to the next step of the 5% tier. But it didn't pass anyways.
Okay, that was my question.
Because OSBA sent that out, I didn't realize it hadn't passed.
Okay. That's why when I saw it, I'm like, oh, maybe this will get us too, but.
Well, and honestly, the issue becomes, and like I told Mark, we're not wealthy enough and we're not poor enough. So we're really, we're in the middle here.
Yes. Yes.
I like this, this is nice.
Doctor.
Doctor.
Doctor, that's right.
That's doctor.
That's doctor, that's right.
Doctor can heal anything. So, overall, we're running very well, we're running better than we anticipated. One more month left in fiscal year, so we'll just make, we're still ending up with a positive cash flow. Still waiting on what's gonna happen for next year.
Okay. Great, anybody have any other questions, Mr. Jones? Alright, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Dingle?
Yes. That motion passes. Need a motion for adjournment into executive session for the purpose of complaints against a public employee.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Dingle?
Yes. We are in executive session at. We are back from executive session, it is 7:58. Mr. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Spindler?
Here.
Mr. Vincent?
Here.
Mr. Zani?
Here.
Mrs. Dingle?
Here, we have a quorum, we can continue. We have a personal consent calendar. We need a motion for, let's look at that, let's see, we've got A through I. I, but I'm gonna need you to take out the substitute teachers for me, if you will, please. We could do that one separate.
Alright, so I make a motion to approve six A, and then six C through I.
Second. Alright, any discussion? Any questions? Alright, Mr. Jones?
Couple real things just for me to do. Obviously, the Memorial and understanding are here for the two unions, so I don't think we had a chance to read them. The team shirts has not been approved by the team shirts yet.
Okay.
Thurs was scheduled to 24th of June.
Okay.
The college board can be paid to first pay in July. If we wait till 24th, it won't be till our July 16th board being approved. It's passed the first pay, we're going to stick to 15th. So that's the reason why, that, just while, there's still a chance it could go down. We hope, we hope not. And then also around here are salary schedules, just one-year salary schedules. And again, no changes, everything's the same. There was one change. Had the administrative, they dealt with Mrs. Perkins' husband's on there. It just says now that making a recommendation to give an employee a step causes her to be a violation of the high-rise code. It's I made that decision instead of her.
Gotcha.
And that's just, and that's just for that case only. If it's never our spouse or anything, it's fine, she always does it. But if it does cause that, then I'll make a recommendation for her to move a step. That's the only change. Again, just to protect everybody.
Absolutely. And the teachers have signed on their emails?
Yes, the teachers did approve theirs, yes.
Okay.
And they said, the union said it passed with overwhelming majority.
Great, which we really appreciate, so that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Dingle?
Yes. Passes, and then we need a motion for eight B, please.
Motion to approve six B.
Six B, yes, thank you. It's my vision, sorry.
Second.
One second, I have to go over here. So that's Mrs. Spindler, Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Six B.
Any discussion on that? Alright, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Dingle?
Abstain? Alright, that passes. We have a plethora of business items, it looks like.
First one is another Zoom meeting.
Gotcha, okay.
It deals with the construction project for the high school middle school renovation. I have several people coming on.
One, very short presentation.
It's about five lines.
No, nope, not all.
Take charge.
That's right, you're in charge of everything.
Actually Jeff's in charge, so. Why is it all me, Jeff?
Please take Rick up to his screen.
I'm at speaker view. Ah, let's switch it. Gallery view, there you go.
Okay, I don't know why it's working.
There you are. You're good.
Ted, can you hear me? Okay, we can hear Ted. Jeff. Sorry, Ted.
Happened last time.
Try that again.
Can you try again? Ted, can?
Rick, you can't talk again? Please get off of the Zoom table.
Alright.
Because if you do, I have to keep this muted or it's gonna echo real bad.
I have my mic muted.
Okay.
See if that works.
Yeah, can you guys hear us?
Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you, alright. Alright, so Ted's with Garre Miller. He's basically working with Brian Wolf with the high school middle school renovation. There are two items on the agenda, the very first thing. The first one is basically, it's PRR SD phase for the high school middle school renovation. This document's moved way past where we're at now, but we have to prove this. This was as of December of 19, really, is where the, this document is stopped at. And then the DDs, they've been moving on. So what Ted's gonna do is walk you through basically a quick overview of what the site, what it looks like, and then what part of the high school's not getting renovated to meet budget. And then the second part is the GMP for asbestos removal for the high school and middle school. And we wanna try to do some of that this summer to help expedite the process. So it's all yours, do you need to share anything, or are you good?
As long as everybody, I can, as long as everybody can see the plan that we published, I can just.
Yeah, there's attachment to that. There's two, there's an attachment, one's the, one tells you, the document tells what's changes. The other one's the actual picture of the high school in a PDF format.
I can go ahead and share a screen as well.
I got it. Is it the graphic plan?
I think it's the graphics, SWL graphics.
Oh, there we go.
Probably should put it up on the.
Oh, I started making Eric the host, oh, Aaron didn't want to be the host. They coast.
I can see his computers.
Okay, Ted, you're now the host. If you want to share a screen. Let's see if it works.
Alright, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so we'll, with this plan, we're gonna kind of take a bigger overview picture of where we're at in a graph presentation, where we're at with the, with the school design at SD, as we already mentioned. And then I think Julie can come in and get a little more specific about where we're at with the PRR items. But I will start up here in the right-hand corner. So first of all, building-wide systems improvements, so things are happening throughout the building. So we've got included a new fire alarm system. We've got a new fire sprinkler system. Replacing the technology, we're replacing the security system. We're doing a full replacement of heating and cooling. We're replacing primary electrical equipment throughout. We're replacing the membrane roof system, so that represents about 70% of the whole roof. The balance of that is metal roof, which we do not have in the SD replacements right now. We have some gutter dance about modifications to repair some of the storm drain issues that we've seen going on. We've included replacing the exterior doors in the existing frames. We've got replacing the exterior windows. We've got new furnishings, and we've got new restrooms, exterior faucets throughout, except for in the locker room. I will say something, we are excluding a number of these things. We have talked about addressing them as an alternance, so we can move with those as well.
Ted, can I say something real quick?
Hello?
Can I say something real quick, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I wanted to mention, Brian and Clay Keith Robinson took a little different approach to this building. They went with the concept of designing it to the budget. So they only have in here what gets them to the budget. Most of the other buildings, Edna, they designed it out and found out, oop, we're over budget, and we had to delete everything. So they started with a different concept of adding things in till they got to the budget, and that's where they stopped. So that's why some things like the locker room faucets are not getting done, because that, based on initial estimates in SD, that would put them over budget. There's things we've asked to be discussed and, you know, things to look at in the future, get more and more options as alternates, as part of DD, to look at doing some of this stuff. But that's how Brian designed it. Is that correct, Clay? Since Brian's not here, Julie? Anyone?
That is, this is Ted, that is the approach that we took. I think the starting point was warm, safe for I, and then we prioritized from there.
Alright, thank you.
So the next box down there is some of the LFI items that were included in the SD. So we've got secure entrance vestibule, which we've covered in there. Reprogramming spaces, which is kind of something that happens throughout here. Then we've got some line items in for the stage curtain and auditory lighting right now. And then we can move kind of through the plans to what we're doing in specific areas. Starting on the right-hand side of the orange area, the administration area. So this is where we redesigned the secure vestibule. We've got some wall reconfiguration in here. We're getting new flooring, new ceilings, new wall finishes, new interior doors, new lighting, and new casework. And then moving to the left, the purple area, what we have is new dining. We have wall reconfiguration to expand the dining area. New flooring, new ceilings, new wall finishes, new doors, and new lighting. And I think you'll see in the lower left-hand corner of the dining area here, to expand that, we've taken out the men's restroom that was in this location. And you can see what we've done is, in this red catch area and part of the classroom area that we've reprogrammed, we've relocated those restrooms to be across the hall, men's restrooms there as well. And zooming out a little bit to the, and then another portion of the building that's hatched in right up here, we've added additional restrooms that haven't existed before, so we've increased the capacity there. And we have a bank of restrooms in the northwest part of the building, which was previously pretty far away from them. So then the red area here is the bulk of the classroom area that's been reprogrammed, general classrooms, science labs. So there's, we've got significant wall reconfiguration here. All the demodable walls that were in this area have been removed. We've redesigned that space. We've added some corridors permanently, that's east-west corridors, improve circulation through the space. We've got new flooring, new ceilings, new wall finishes, new interior doors, new lighting, casework. And significant in this area is the new lockers, which we've got 1,200 lockers accounted for.
Excuse me for a second. Bob says he needs to be led in by the host, who's the host? It's.
Do we have to? Hey Ted, can you let Bob in the meeting reluctantly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. He's snuck in.
Ask him, ask him what the password is.
I said, how does you do now, sorry. Thank you.
And then on the north part of high school, the blue area here is primarily the music arts area. We've had some wall reconfiguration as part of the reprogramming, not as much as we've had on the red general classroom area. New flooring, new ceiling, new wall finishes, new doors, new lighting, and new casework. And you can see the extent of that work kind of extends down the corridor and some of the program spaces between the gymnasiums and gymnasium locker rooms. We have repurposed some of the space in here for sort of expanding the mechanical, putting some mechanical space on the first floor so maintenance is much easier and accessible from the outside, rather than just being in the penthouses. So, and as Rick mentioned, we can touch on some of the areas that we haven't touched in schematic design. So first of all, this white area here is the corridor. We don't have anywhere to count to four in SD there. The auditorium, as we mentioned, the LFI items for the house lighting and the stage curtain. But beyond that, we don't have any new finishes in there, beyond what we're willing to be done. Primary work as we're running, as we're replacing the fire alarm and the sprinkler system. In the gym, we have no work in SD right now. We are looking at some alternates, I can say, in that space there. And then as Rick mentioned, we've excluded the locker rooms as a block right now, except for the repair work that would need to be done to run the sprinklers and the, and the mechanical changes. So if there's any questions or anything that I missed from.
What would some of the alternates for the gymnasium be?
So I can tell you that we're looking at replacing the lighting in there as an alternate. And we have an alternate in DD for a new bank of bleachers. And the scoreboard will stay, or is it moving to?
It's going to the new scoreboard.
Do we want to get one, or that might be LFI. Do we have an alternate for a scoreboard in the, in the new high school and middle school? Or we bring it over from the middle school?
I think it comes, I think it moves it.
I thought we decided that a long time ago.
I can't remember now.
My question is about the bleachers in the future middle school, is are there plans to make them ADA? With handrails up, even if we don't go with a new set?
I don't think that it's going to be, it's not going to be profitable to replace those, so I think we really need to look at that alternative a little tighter.
But is there a way to take what we have and add the, add the handrails for people going up and down, if necessary?
I think that's something that we'd have to study.
Okay.
Well, this is time to ask questions, because they are moving to DD, and they're pretty far into it, so.
Well, that's my big question.
You want them to look at as alternates, one thing is Bob has mentioned it to himself, is he wanted alternate for that locker, doing it. Same thing, the outside bathrooms that's used for softball, they weren't touching those all either. An alternate for that. Any other, I mean, you as a board, you know, we do, as you know, we've sent two million dollars back additional from that bond, from that COPS issue in case we need it for this building. I'm still worried about, worry about the outside pavement, there may be a lot of pavement that we may have to replace, but maybe there's some stuff that we can do, at least get pricing for that you may want to look at, that's up to you. But this is where it's at at this point. At this point, it's on budget, is that correct? Ted, it's on budget at this point?
At this point, yes. And I think, Rick, you touched on something that's, that's not covered in this drawing. This drawing's really dealing with what we're doing to the school building itself, but it doesn't really address the site, what we do. And I think Julie's document will show that we've addressed the new paving and the bus drop-off and some of those features that were highlighted in the original assessment.
Any questions? Julie, do you want to share anything on the, your document, or?
Sure, I can share my PRR SD comparison.
I'm going to stop sharing.
Can you give it to Julie?
I'm fine.
Her little picture is a little three lines, click it, I think it says they coast.
Let's see.
Can you share it, Ted, if not?
Come on, Ted, you can do it. Let's see. Alright, let's try that. Can you share now, Julie?
Yes, I can.
Alright.
So you should be looking at basically an Excel spreadsheet with color on the left-hand side.
We always see you. Yeah.
Right, try it right now.
There we go.
There you go.
You know, most of these meetings taken care of except the screen sharing, they're all slightly different. This is actually going back to our program requirements, it's divided design. We've actually moved forward from this, but we need to approve this piece before we can start any Perry work on the design development, as far as getting it estimated. And what you see in the first column is the, is the, basically the first two columns is your assessment or your master plan for this building. So your building is assessed before we've been running to a master plan, and they determine that's what this building needed. So just going down through these, we call these A through W because that's how they're numbered, but these are things that they said you needed when we started, and then we tried to give this thing some skin, as we put it, with the thought that we would not affect your curriculum, and we would concentrate on more safe and dry, and what we need for education. So the heating system was supposed to have been replaced entirely, but it wasn't. The roofing had a replacement of membrane and standing seam throughout. The membrane is being replaced, as Ted said, the standing seam will be an alternate. The only thing we have, ventilation and air conditioning, of course, air conditioning is up with your heat, your HVAC. So what we did here, conditioning, is replacement of dust collection system. And that was not included because it's becoming a middle school, and it's probably not something we need. So we can take that money and repurpose it for something else. We had a sort of a partial electrical system replacement. Depending on where you were, it was either a full replacement or not a full replacement. Because we're taking out all this demodulose and reprogramming, we do have a full building electrical system replacement. Sanitary waste piping that was supposed to be a replacement throughout the building. We replaced the kitchen line in 2018, and at this point, we don't have any other issues. So we're not gonna tear up the building to replace something, although we don't have an issue, especially something that's in this lab. Domestic hot water heater was. Um, domestic hot water heater was supposed to be replaced in the original building. And currently, you have a newer unit in place in good condition. So this is some more money that we could repurpose into something else. Um, toilets, urinals, faucets and flush baths and A D A are in four different sections here. And over and all in all, you're getting twenty-eight toilets replaced, faucets and flush baths for the whole building, um, and you're getting the restroom front. Um, so it's hard to separate that out, you know, which, which toilet's going to be A D A at this point. Um, the windows, we were going to replace the windows, combined to the original building and the west gym auditorium. Skylights in the original building and some integral lines that we're using are entry. Um, everything's included except the skylights, and they may be addressed as they get more information on those. Um, was, um, foundation, um, we don't have anything included there. It was a waterproofing spray and drainage tile. Um, some of that, some of those issues may be corrected when you work outside. Um, at this point, they were not included, and this is early in design. And they were looked at as they go through, um, future design phases. Um, the structural walls in chimney, um, we had some tuck point included, um, so stream wall replacement. And that was partially funded. We do have some mineral tuck point, and we'll address the clean and ceiling areas as the design progresses. And we determine we have budget for that. Um, we're going to repair the soffits and the music art entry at this point, and the design is not included. But it, those will likely be addressed in, um, in detail in the future design phases. Um, general finishes, basically, you're getting new lockers, um, casework, flooring, ceiling, walls, new demodables. All those demodables are gone. Um, so everything is included except for that kitchen locker room, we did not include the kitchen equipment. Um, if there is money and, um, it's determined that we have kitchen equipment pieces and parts that need to be replaced, we can address those either by alternate or in future design phase, as we have money. Interior lighting was, um, to be replaced everywhere, but the west auditorium and gym locker room, and that was pretty much what happened. Um, the gym and locker rooms are currently new or two fire lighting. Security, emergency, ingress lighting and fire alarm, um, were replaced throughout the building. And A D A was addressed. Um, we don't have anything on bleachers here, so we need to look at those bleachers Ted. Um, so you're getting, um, your, I think it is everything from your water coolers to your A D A doors, um, and frames, your signage, um, lowering the mirrors. Um, actually, you've got an A D A shower here as well. So that is all going to address, except we didn't include the bleachers. Side conditions, we had a lot of asphalt replacement, concrete curbs, concrete sidewalks, um, in different places and some dumpster pads. The, the asphalt around the building was tearing apart. Um, so we, we've made an attempt to get all of that taken there in the budget. Um, the current plans call for milling and filling the parking lot and median duty peeling. Um, traffic flow has been considered, and the final design is still in process. There was no issue with the sewer system and the toilet connects out to the stream. And the water supply, um, we had new domestic water mains everywhere, but the west auditorium, that was not included, and it would be a design contingency item in case needed. Exterior doors, um, we did door frames and hardware throughout, with two overhead doors in the west gym and six fire doors, that's all your exterior doors for the most part. I'm going to take out all the abatement, we're going to G M P distract that this summer. Uh, new fire suppression sprinkler system, um, a discussion's budget and a technology budget. So we got, I would say, most of the scope and certainly the most important scope, as far as one shape and drive and making that book function for six straight figures. Are there any questions?
So that's the first one resolution. Second one deals with the asbestos. So why don't you have a quick, I want to add to G M P, please?
G M P, you need to the G M P, I'm sorry, I have to bear with you.
Yeah, anybody, everyone wants to talk live real quick.
Hey Clay, you want to go down? Okay. I don't know what happened to him.
Maybe how about... The G M P for the abatement is actually pretty clear cut scope of work. In phase one, we're going to be removing floor tiles in the classrooms. And in essence, doing what we can do without causing any leaks or obstructions for teaching throughout the school year. We will come back in phase two, there are few classrooms that, that will have to be abated for the floors, but we're leaving those classrooms alone this summer because they also have some pipe insulation that will be above the ceiling. So instead of going in the rooms twice, we're going to go in to them once, when we can completely straighten the work. The total G M P, I believe, is at about ninety thousand, ninety-five thousand. Like I said, it's a pretty clear cut piece. We're doing phase one this year, and then we'll do phase two when we come back and actually start work at lockers when the new us school is finished.
Any questions? Am I comfortable with voting? Well, I think that's everything, everybody. I appreciate taking time, getting on, helping us, helping me explain there to the board, but, uh, thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to go a little faster, just wanted to explain to you, so...
So we need a motion to approve both those resolutions. Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion or questions on those? You heard there were a couple things, I know you got that with the bleachers and the thing.
Ted, two, he's supposed to score one, I think, yes.
Alright.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That motion passes. Let's see, we've got policies, we've got first reading of some and, uh, second reading of others. Probably could take both of those together. So B and C, motion for B and C?
Motion to approve, um, is this seven?
Seven B and C, yeah.
Yeah, seven B and C.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, the first policy is, um, it's basically getting us in line with a couple changes in federal grant law. We put some procedures in place last year, the O D E came out, O D E came out some new guidelines. This is adding some additional wording, mainly dealing with E S Cs, where you can slowly pick them as a sole provider instead of having to bid out. They got to be a high performing E S C, because it spells out if it's zero, ten thousand dollars, do what you want. Like ten to two fifty, you got to get at least three, two quotes. Two fifty more, you have to do full bidding, so that's the whole procedure. But with E S Cs, if they meet the requirements by O D E, they're considered single source, then you just take whatever price they give you, basically, so... That's really the changes in the two policies, you know, and questions there. Is there any question on those two? And the other ones were, they were last time, so no changes, correct?
Correct.
Alright, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Those pass. Seven, probably you can do D, E, yeah, D and E?
To approve seven D and seven E.
Second. Great, Mr. Jones?
One is actually in lieu of transportation, that the amount set by O D E, we have no choice. You pay that as a minimum, so that's what pays minimum. The other ones, the actual students who've, we've actually determined, we're out the metric criteria to basically not have to transport them, but we're agreeing to pay them, something in lieu of transportation. It's maximum like two fifty per student for the whole year, so it's, works out better, so is there anything you want to add on that? It's routine, we do it every year, it's just somewhat we, it's easier, cheaper for us just to pay this versus trying to transport them.
Alright, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That passes. Alright, um, let's see, we need a motion to approve the amendment number one to the state route three-ten funding agreement. But we need a motion and then we can discuss.
So moved.
And I'll second that. Why don't you go ahead and explain it, Mr. Jones, and then we'll discuss, okay?
Um, so basically this is the, uh, they had about a million dollars, eleven million dollars left over, so they decided to call some debt. So they're calling debt, paying off early, which is actually saving interest. So what this does essentially allows them to call the debt, it reduces our obligation uh, from about forty-two to thirty-one, around there, off the top of my head, I can't remember. So it saves us money, but we are still contributing to the, the, the paying debt back for wiring and three-ting that we were told we would be first one to help. I should not go steal you two's thunders over there. So basically this is asking you to approve this change to the funding agreement to refinance and to save us money on our required debt payments.
Does every single entity have to approve this amendment?
That's my understanding, yes, everybody's got to sign off on it.
I, I just want to say this again, I'll take the horse and beat it again. On February eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, the Edna Administrator, along with an Edna Township trustee, attended our public board meeting, requesting the board provide funds for the three-ten project. Uh, it was stated that the township has spoke with the engineer about our district being the last one in and the first one out in public session. It was also stated a few different times that the commit would, could, our commitment would more likely be, would not likely be up to twenty-five years, so it wouldn't be twenty-five years, and we would probably contribute less than fifty thousand dollars. I'd also like to say they also said that we would be reimbursed for the, the amount that we contributed. I found that by listening to the board meeting in public session. So I have a problem with a document, and I appreciate that it is saving us money. Uh, I have a problem with a document that clearly shows the district who was supposed to be the last one in, first one out, is paying the entire amount the entire time as all of the other entities. I don't know if that was an over promise. I don't know how that was said to another governmental entity in a public session, and it's not being acted upon, and I have a problem with it.
She's so much nicer than I am. Because see, here's the thing, I personally don't like lying. And I think that we were bold-faced lied to in a public session. And this particular document is taking down everyone's payment. And this, what should have happened if we were to be last in and first out was that we should have seen the entire cost savings first.
Correct, and that's not happening.
That is not happening here.
And this is the same group that wants us to go into additional agreements?
Correct.
Into the future?
Absolutely.
So my issue is if you are wanting us to go into agreement, we have to be able to trust that.
Absolutely.
And unfortunately, we cannot.
No.
So, um, I agree with what Mrs. Moore just said. I, while I appreciate the fact that it's saving us a little bit of money, sometimes you have to stand up for the principle of things, and if you're lied to, then, you know, it makes it tough going into any agreements in the future.
Absolutely.
Sorry, Mrs. Spindler.
I was just, is it, all of that stuff was said in the public? Absolutely. On the February meeting of eighteen? Yes, it was. And the original document is... Can I get a copy of that?
Original?
Yeah.
You mean agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where it says we're... It was not put in writing, it was said verbally multiple times. Gotcha, gotcha. Yes.
Do you have a video?
Well, yeah, I, I just wanted to all, I wanted to bush all my resources together. Correct.
Right, so regardless whether it's in writing or not,
No, no, I...
No, no, we've been asked to accept gentlemen, gentlewomen agreements on things. So if, you know, they're wanting, I don't know, that's very troublesome to me. And I'm just going to leave it there.
I, I would, I'll get to this playing in the scene box and play nicely a little bit later. But if, if we just quickly look at the J U D Z revenue from April thirtieth, two thousand twenty, the J U D Z one had a gross revenue of two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for four months. The J U D Z two had a gross revenue of nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So it's not like we are trying to get water from a rock.
No. Got it. I believe at my last, um, J U D Z meeting, which I am the social, or the school district's representative to, the J U D Z two was over, over its anticipated budget for this year because of its May, um, revenue by a significant percentage, so... And that's where Amazon is. That is Amazon, yes, uh-huh, yes.
And did they vote to approve this agreement?
They did, but I am only one member of that, so...
Do you know what the vote was?
Yes, it, it was four to one.
Four to one, interesting.
Yes, yes.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can you still get your copy of that agreement if you'd like?
Um, yeah, just, if you don't mind. I think you may have already given it to me like forty times, but I'll take it again.
If you get it in email, I wouldn't mind taking it.
I'll just send it over again.
Thank you.
So. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
No.
Mrs. Engel?
No.
Mrs. Spindler?
No.
Mr. Vincent?
No.
Mr. Zani?
No.
Alright, Mr. Jones, you'll pass on that information, please? Alright, we have, uh, item G. We have some discussion regarding the digital signs for the new buildings.
So basically, we're basically doing some bidding on this furniture, stuff for Edna four-five high school. And the digital signs and some of the board was, was talked to about in February. Uh, Mr. J L brought estimates in that he was provided, and it turns out those estimates were off, way off. Um, so originally, in the estimates, the slides were showing that we only had put about thirty-two hundred dollars, three thousand two hundred nineteen dollars in per sign. The actual number is thirty-one thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars per sign. So basically, the number that he was providing was probably just for the foundation and not the actual sign itself. So, at this point, the base bid is still just the old sign. With the S, with the numbers, the abatements, not abatement, but the bidding that just came in, the actual budget for the four-five came in about two hundred and thirty-eight thousand lower. The basically, actual coming lower than estimates, so there's a lot, there's extra money. So we're able to choose a lot of alternates, including the sign. We can probably get the sign covered for the four-five, because all that savings is basically the money we put in, because we had put in two point nine million dollars, would come back to us, and we could use that one, everything. Just get almost, I think, almost every...
Probably the entire list.
And Terry Westall, including the sign for the four-five building.
Not the high school sign?
No, get near me.
Sorry, it's locked together on the item. You're stealing his thunder.
Still my thunder.
Stay with the good news.
The high school was, there was bid savings on the high school. Not as much, but the issue with the high school is we didn't put all the money, we didn't put extra money in, which is a good thing. So any bid day savings, forty-five cents, that goes back to the state. And the state will not pay for a digital sign. Um and really, there's not enough money to do all the alternates at the four or five, at the high school. So if we want, we can get the sign, digital sign for four or five, if we want it for the high school, we need to be able to chip in that thirty-one thousand dollars. We already dedicated about six thousand dollars, so we're talking about twenty-five thousand more. We do have the money in our BI contingency, there's possibly there's money left in our LFI contingency for the project to that. If we want to move forward with that sign for the high school. We wait and just put it what we did and just do the same thing, both of them, so they look different. It's up to you how you wanna handle it, um. Again, if we wanna put a digital sign there for the high school, we need to come up with additional money for that.
One thing I think we should consider too is that they are gonna be on the same campus, so.
We need to be consistent.
I really don't like the idea of having a digital sign at the four or five and not at the high school, yeah.
And this is the sign on the building or in front of the building?
In front of the building, it's basically about where they come, everybody comes in and out.
That place, okay, okay.
So it's out by Warrior Roads, right, right on Warrior.
Warrior, okay, yeah.
Warrior Drive. So basically, we have the building, and again, there's possible that we can use the LFI contingency for the project itself. But we don't, can't use it right yet, I mean, the roads, we've had some work due on the road, I think we talked last time on the road. We've got to estimate, we had put a lot of hundred and forty thousand dollars in to fix the road. But it's gonna fix the whole road between the two buildings with basically concrete uh support from one end to the other. And that's all coming out of the LFI contingency, there's still, I think, three, four hundred thousand left in there. Uh but we just don't know what's gonna come up between now and the high school being finished. And a lot of times, even that LFI contingency, part of it is the state's, well, not LFI, but the state shares it stuff, so. Um there may be a possibility we don't actually need to put money in, but to have them move forward, at this point, we have to do it. But possibly getting reimbursed back in the projects, um again, we won't know till it's complete. Try not to confuse, not confusing you, but there's lots and lots of money, but.
Right.
Right, now in my mind, you know, when they wanted to put the logo and all that, that was a lot of money and we said no. But the sign is functional, and it's a form of communication, so I, to me, I feel like we really. At least need that at the high school, I don't know if we could just do it at the high school and not four or five, but. Yeah, so.
Several pots of money.
Right.
Uh we can, if we wait till the very end and the money came free, we could wait till then. Uh these are two side signs, so basically, you'll be able to see both directions are coming on Warrior Way.
I'm fine with doing both of them.
There you go.
I think about four of the ways, we call it Warrior, but at least Warrior's correct. So Warrior Way, so you still see it both sides, and still, that's a really good price for a sign. So I guess I just need your your board to, you know, apologize if you just give them bad numbers. And then these are the actual bid numbers, so this, these numbers should, will not change.
I agree with John.
Me too.
Do you wanna, do you need a motion or just a sort of our?
I'm fine, I think we have video of everything, so I'm fine, everybody's okay, moving forward with the digital sign for the high school. If we have to put additional money, I'd be willing to do that.
All right. Okay, we need a motion to approve the fleet liability and property insurance renewal with EMC Insurance Companies. At a cost of one hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars.
This is a hand renewal, all the rates have went up, so this is about five thousand more. But you know, our our insurance consultant got the quotes, they were higher, I guess the reinsurance market is just taking a hit, and they're really. She probably knows, is, you know, taking a hit and they're driving on us, so you know, five thousand isn't horrible, we had a good year. Uh we have a ton of claims other than the bills risk, but separate from this. But still, we saw, still saw an increase, we're hoping it's better next year, but this is the best rate we can get, so I ask the board to please approve that.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Motion passes, we have the elementary handbook. We need a motion to approve. And then we can discuss if need be. Yeah, you want them all together? We could do them all together.
To approve H seven, H through L?
I through L.
I through O?
Second.
It's been a long night.
Only eight forty-five.
All right. Any, any discussion on any of those, any questions, yeah, I assumed, that's fine.
I know, I'll do my best, if I don't have the answer. No, you don't have, mine were just uh mostly suggestions, my first suggestion is, can we get them all to look the same?
Yes.
So like the elementary and the the uh early learning look the same, but then you go to middle school and it's different?
The middle school's diff, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think the middle schools may look different because it's a portion of that agenda book that they get at the beginning of the year, it's like inside of it.
Oh.
I think you could still have it like formatted inside that way, but the cover would be different, cause it's a cover, it's a cover of the agenda.
I'm just thinking, you know, if I get it, uh huh, early learning, I know exactly where I need to look to find the dress code. Yep. When I'm in high school, kinda thing. Um my next. Uh to to to, in all of them, it talks about visitors to the school and how we encourage visitors. Do we, and this is just a, this is just a thought, do we want to say um. Some kind of suggestion of when you're visiting at at lunch or something, if it does cause problems, you'll be asked to be removed?
I think there's a lunch, I don't know about the secondary, I think there's a lunchtime thing in the elementaries about not coming to lunch, um. I feel like I read that.
It was. You you can't, you can't bring your kids, they can't go out on recess.
I read this too.
But then my thought was, well, what if, what if somebody comes to visits and then they're just creating mass havoc?
Yeah, if they're, if if somewhere in the handbook somewhere else, there's not about visitors, you know, a disruption in the school day, we'll be asked to remove, then we can add it in.
Okay.
After here, I would hope it's in there somewhere else.
There's something in there.
But I have to look.
Yeah, I would, this this is kind of just like in addition to if you are visiting. I thought maybe when you talk about um how you're gonna communicate closings, make a reference to. If that's still on our website, on how we make the decision, please see our website on how we make the decision on closings.
That's a good idea.
I got one, go on.
That's good.
Um then, when we're talking about dropping students off. And I'm thinking specific for just the elementaries, you talk about, don't drop them off five minutes before. I would say maybe include, this includes um. Any students who are dropped off early and left outside prior to the five minutes of a teacher being there. Cause I know that, especially in Edna, there was a few different times where uh Ms. Horstman would have to say, don't drop your kids off earlier than five minutes beforehand. Well, inevitably, that would last a week, and then, you know, the following week, you'd have ten, you know, ten kids standing out there and there's no teacher. Everybody's waiting in line, so I don't know if you wanna put a reference to another subtle reminder, nobody's gonna be out there at five if you're dropping your kids off.
In the morning?
Five, no, I'm sorry, five minutes ahead of time.
It's like, who's gonna be out there at six either?
Then I had a thought for when we're talking about free and reduced, maybe adding just a little caveat on there. Should a situation change in the middle of school year, where you'll need to use, need to apply for free and reduced? You'll be encouraged to do so, so we do talk about signing up for free and reduce, but maybe even encouraging like halfway through the year, if somebody loses their job. You can still apply for it.
Yeah, they absolutely can, so that's.
Yeah.
Or any time, any time that your situation changes, please.
And that was pretty much what I had.
Okay, those are all easy.
See, no, no, they were easy.
And we talked about behavior problems and you changed the wording on that, correct? Okay.
I spoke to Edward Elementary, to Edward Secondary.
Thank you.
And um I don't know if all the updated ones are on the drive, but they've been changed.
Thank you.
Yeah, Kathy, I spoke about that too, actually.
Okay, yeah.
I had questions, but I already asked them, but if everyone else wants to hear what I suggested slash asked for reference. I will only touch on the like highlights. Most of my questions were elementary. I had a question and it was simple answered about the alternative clothing, like if they wear something inappropriate, there will be alternative closing. Clothing, I didn't realize we already had a uh process in place. My concern in this environment we're in right now is getting them washed, or making sure they're washed when you give them, and. Do we have enough to fit various size of children's, children? Um that was answered that, yes, we do all of that. And I, my other suggestion was um with the change of the progress book, or I'm sorry, the report cards being available. Um on date rather than will be mailed, I suggested that we add the where to go to get them, like the progress book link. And if you need your child's login, please reach out to his or her teacher, um those were my two big things. The rest was.
Yeah, but those were taken here already.
Stuff, thank you.
Perfect. Did you have anything?
I'm good this time, I'm normally the.
We made all your changes in previous years, so we're good.
I love the idea of having them all match, that is.
I like that, I do too.
Yep, good, all right, so everybody good? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, all right, those all pass, we just pray that the children are in the buildings to hand them out to.
Yes.
All right, we have a discussion regarding memorandum of understanding with Edna Township. Mr. Jones?
So basically, included, when they went with the board agenda is a copy of the draft. Agreement that was sent to me and I forwarded to the two members who were helping with the abatement committee uh to review. So the agreement is based on the agreement that was approved with safe task. Which is change for a township, there's other things that change, we will change if we have to move forward. But this was just the first thing that came to us, our attorney looked, read, looked through real quick, made comments too. I was starting to go through it, then I got feedback from John and then Deb and uh communicated that on back to the. Two head of township attorneys, and then was asked to put on here for the board to discuss, so. Deb or John, either one of you want to talk about it?
Mrs. Moore does much better than I do, but I'll be happy to chime in.
Please chime in, please, okay, so way back, probably what, March was it, did we first have about four or five, the phone call? School district was on, just to refresh everybody's memory, school district was on a phone call with rural looking county, um all of the entities, looking county, um Edna Township. All the, all of the entities that are, were involved, um and we were immediately, within probably the first minute. Told that we didn't need the numbers that we needed, we were asking for too much, there's no reason, we don't understand why the school district is doing this.
Can I stop you, and was that for a, that was for a specific property at that point in time, correct?
Correct, that was for the abatement that we just approved.
That we just approved, okay.
We were the ones in the wrong.
Okay, all right.
We were, yeah, here here we go with the the whole sandbox, we were told that we all have to play, we're all a big family. We all have to play in the sandbox together, and you know. What are you guys gonna do, school district, so of course, trying to facilitate the meeting, girl looking county asked. The commissioners if they were willing to give up anything, they immediately said no, uh township said no. Uh then it came back to the district, and what is the district gonna do, well, if we're all playing in the same sandbox, then we shall. Play, uh so the district, Rick very eloquently said, okay, when we're done, we don't need to be on the phone anymore.
Not a path forward.
Uh so we got a different phone call from this with the township uh attorneys, the developers this time saying. Hey, listen, we really need to get this done, we're, our backs up against a wall. Um the township wants you to sign this MOU, we said, we're not willing to sign an MOU. Not willing to sign the MOU with township, well, why aren't you? Well, for reasons, reasons that we just previously discussed, they had an agreement with us that they didn't adhere to. We've told them repeatedly, over and over, since I've been on the board, probably Roger, since you've been on the board. That we're gonna look individually at each abatement and make a decision, that's how we're, we are going to do it. So we'd be willing to communicate with them, absolutely willing to communicate with them, but at this point in time, we're not gonna sign a ten-year agreement. And hamper future board members and their ability to negotiate. I I I never received any phone call from the township, did you?
I did not.
So I guess the best, to the best of my knowledge, the township attorney contacted our attorney, basically sent the MOU over and said, here's the MOU.
Yeah, I can think back forth, said they were working on it, and sent to us based on what was approved for safe task. So that's, and when I got it, that's what I sent out to the two board members to to look at, so. Um again, yeah, just, it was based on the core five, we said we'd talk to them about it. We never said we was gonna do it, we just didn't need to talk about it. We've been doing a lot of talking, you know, back and forth, a lot, the board attorney, third attorney, enforcement, but. Again, you know, Mrs. Moore is right, is, you know, the concern is. You know, what are they tying our hands for, why are they trying to do this, one thing that Mrs. Moore asked is, do they have to sign the same kind of agreement with the looking county? No, they don't.
Don't have any agreement with them, right?
County, so.
If we're all in the same sandbox, why aren't we having agreements with everybody?
And I think we were, the the district was pretty clear when we were speaking on that phone call, that we liked the agreement, we were happy with what we got. We wanted to get back to what we originally had, we're okay.
And we said that last month at our meeting.
There's, there's, you know, as far as needing an agreement, we don't need one, we're okay, unless something new-fangled comes along. That we could, you know, perhaps look into, we're okay, we're not gonna ask for crazy things. Uh so we said again, we're not going to sign anything. So now we are at the. We we received on Monday another request to have a Zoom meeting. And at this point, that's when I kinda lost it and said, why is it always us? Why do we need to have the Zoom meeting, it doesn't appear that we are the the entity that needs to have the Zoom meeting, we already approved the abatement. Why do we have to come to a Zoom meeting, we already did what we did, we approved the abatement, the the developer said we need to get it done, we got it done within their timeframe. We approved it, we said we would communicate, we said we would do this, this, we've done it all.
Everything that we've said.
Why are we in the Zoom meeting, I don't wanna have another Zoom meeting?
So um has the township not approved their abatement?
No, as far as I know, they still have not, they're waiting on the school's agreement.
Well, that's ridiculous.
We, I don't know.
Well, we voted last month to approve it without any agreement.
Right, I remember.
Yeah, and they're, last time I heard, they had not approved it yet, and they were waiting on this MOU, with the, with the school district.
But this MOU is not tied to the abatement approval.
It's from our end.
It's all future.
Yeah, this has nothing to.
Well, right, so it shouldn't affect the project, like you were saying, we we've done, okay.
But the core five abatement, not our problem, Edna Township votes down, they're voting down, that's not us, we approved it based on the.
That abatement's over and done with for us.
Yes, you know, it's up to Edna Township, they wanna prove it and move forward or not, so.
So it shouldn't be, it's kind of like.
Shouldn't they be in the Zoom?
It's off of our.
Yes, correct.
So plates.
Yeah.
And the issue is basically.
I ate my green beans.
We've never asked for more.
Metaphor.
We're trying to get back up to, we got back up to where we were when the very first abatement came through with with Prologis, the JEDZ won thirty percent. It took us, from that point, two thousand and eight till now, to get back up there, cause. Edna township kept on bringing us less and less and less, and doors all kinds of favors. And basically, we're just trying to get back to, as we've said all along, we're just trying to get back to where we were at a partnership level. You know, I did that spreadsheet just so you know, no.
Right.
Edna township, these are profit-making things for Edna township.
Correct.
If you compare it to their, what they're giving up, they're making about a hundred and eight percent of what they're giving up probably. They kinda gets about forty percent, thirty to forty percent of what they're giving up, and we're getting nineteen percent.
Right.
We are giving up the most and getting the less percent made whole. And that's, and then that's, that's at the thirty percent, we were at sixteen, seventeen percent, where they won is that, we at least got up to nineteen, that's where we should be at. Ideally, we'd like to get more, but again, that's where we want to be at, that's what we're gonna be at, and that's what we. And that's what we want to stay at. We're not asking for more than that at this point.
So after Rick communicated back that still an O, Mr. O'Neal, who is in charge of South Gate, which is where they're working on the development and everything like that, wanted to speak to both John and I. And my response back to Rick was, you know, we can talk to him after the board meeting. That's why we wanted to present it, to make sure that we were all still in agreement with, with what's going on. I can call up Mr. O'Neal. John and I can do it. Can do a Zoom meeting if we want. And explain to him that at this time, the board is gonna individually look at abatements. And we are not, certainly not gonna tie the hands of future board members for the next 30 years, which is what the MOU wants.
Minimum of 10, maximum of 30.
Yeah, minimum of 10, but to be renewed twice.
And in my mind, there are two issues here. First one, I said it, it's our last discussion. It's trust. Okay? They didn't hold up their end of the agreement with the road. So in my opinion, I'm kind of the fool me once, shame on, shame on you, but fool me twice, shame on me. So if you can't go into something in good faith, and I can't trust that, I have a hard time going to any future agreement with you. Cause you did not hold up your end of the word, but, or the deal. But number two, in addition to trust, this thing with Patascala has me troubled as well. Because we worked, what, many years, a lot of back and forth. At times, it seemed it was improbable an agreement would happen. But we, and we've been able to work with Etna without an agreement for years. Okay, so now, why do we, I would think they should answer, why is an agreement needed now? It doesn't make sense. Why all of a sudden are you pushing us down our throat? We've worked with you over the years. We've pretty much given you what you wanted. And we haven't asked for more than what we started from asking, not a penny more. And that isn't enough. They want more. They want this agreement. And this agreement is being ramrodded through. I, I don't even see it much as an agreement. They're presenting it to us here. This is what it is. You guys take and eat it and you just deal with it. There's no negotiation. There's no agreement. There's no reason why this has to be rushed. And in my mind, because this is so rushed, there is something they aren't telling us. There absolutely has to be something they are not telling us. Because this Patascala agreement, this was in the works prior to me even getting on the board. And then when I was on the board, it took us almost two years to get this. But now, all of a sudden, overnight, we're having a meeting Thursday, we want this approved. That doesn't make sense to me. Again, fool me once. I'm, I, I don't understand that. So I don't feel like we owe them an answer at all as to why we have an agreement with Patascala and why we don't have an agreement with them. We have been keepers of our word. We have proven our word. We have done everything that they've asked. We've approved it in the time that they want it done. And now we're asking for more. And I have a problem with that. Especially with the people asking for more are not holding up their end of the word or their end of the deal with other things. How do you really?
I'm blown away, in a good way. It's, it's, it's truly just amazing. So you know, if, if the board is okay, I'll, I'll play in the scene box again.
Yes.
And explain again, you know what, it, it, I, I, as I shared in my email back to Rick, if it's that difficult working with the district, perhaps they don't even come to the district at all. You don't need to.
Because what is the standard? You can automatically get an abatement for what, 15 years?
No, 10. It's enterprise here. And one's like 70% for 10 years. That one's like 50%.
Right, 50.
Yeah.
Depends if it's enterprise versus CRA.
Yeah, so there you go, right?
But I also would think that if it were that important to them, they knew we were having a meeting tonight. You'd think there would be a representative here, but there's no one.
I would think that when we said we were willing to communicate, that there would be somebody reaching out to communicate with us. Not just sending us, here's your marked up MOU.
Right.
Yeah, I noticed it was red line. Alright, so there's no motion on that one?
Nope.
Nope, alright.
Motion or emotion?
Emotion, a lot of emotion.
That's right. So no motion on that one? Great. How about a motion for 8A, which is our lack of service level agreement?
I'll make a motion for that.
Okay. About a second.
Second.
Okay, any questions?
So usual agreement with them each year. I think it went up a little bit, what, a ton, but they are providing great services to us. We need to ask the board to approve it.
Alright, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That passes. Treasures items, looks like probably we can do A through D. Yep, motion for those, please.
Motion 9A through D.
Second.
Donations, we always appreciate those. Last minutes, staying the purposes, trying to get everything wrapped up for account year end, our fiscal year end. Temporary appropriations allows us to start spending money after July 1st. Employees like to be paid, so we need permission to do that. So allows us to start spending money, starts July 1st. And the administrative certificate is just basically bringing all of our balances into what we actually receive. We have estimates beginning here by state law. We can't, can't spend more than we actually receive in revenue. We can't estimate more revenue than we actually receive. So this brings all this stuff in line for account, fiscal year end, to be in compliance with the law. So I have to board to approve all four of these, please.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Jones?
Just thank you for the donations.
Alright, go ahead.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Those pass. Item 10, superintendent's items.
So I wanted to talk a little bit about the call. I kind of wanted to give you a little update as where we're at in the process, what's going on. I know I shared a little bit in the board about an update last Friday that we're, our committee started this week. So we have an academic committee, a transportation committee, food service and facilities. The academic committee is, is the large one. That's the, you know, all encompassing. We had to even divide it into three separate subcommittees today to actually work on all our goals. So that committee does include both district reps, principals, teacher leaders, or instructional coaches, as well as the union. So it's, it's a pretty large group, just kind of working on what this may look like under three scenarios. Well, really two. So the focus of the committees is to look at both the hybrid model and then a normal return to school. Well, not normal, but return to school, well, everybody and what that would look like and what modifications we have to put in place, safety, et cetera. So those committees are meeting weekly. The academic committee meets twice a week, just because there's so much work to be done. Once, once we get a good grasp on where we're at with that, with that development and groups, we'll then go on to add some subcommittees, which will include special ed, gifted and preschool. But currently, we're gonna let the academic group make some decisions before we include them. So with, with those committees, you know, they're also looking for guidance from my end of things and from conversations I'm having. So today happened to be, well, every week we meet all the county superintendents. But today was our first like future planning meeting, I guess you could say. It included all the superintendents, as well as officials from hospital, infectious disease and the health department and OT. So it's a really nice opportunity for everybody to kind of get their input insights and to see, you know, where we're at, what's going on. So Chad Brown from health department, you know, when asked, when we go back normal, he can't definitely give us that answer today because technically, we're still under the June 30th, you know, guidance of, of the numbers. However, it's, it's his belief that, and like the governor said, he's going to come out with some, you know, regulations or recommendations for school. Whatever, wherever he's gathering his information from, he believes that it's going to be a local decision. As in, the local health department is gonna put forth parameters and then the school districts will have to follow them. Now, he did say that obviously, there are going to be things that everybody has to do. And then some that are going to be based on the district, the size, that there's lots of, you know, variables that he said it's not gonna probably be a one size fits all. So based on our conversation today, I, I believe that we will be headed in the direction of returning to school. I guess that could change depending what the governor says, but that's kind of what I took from this meeting, what we all took from the meeting. He has promised, promised us a July 3rd deadline of letting us know about transportation. Because as we stated today, if we cannot transport kids to school, we can't have school. And that's, that's everybody. That's a, a common issue. Transportation, common areas for large groups, so your cafeterias and, and large classes, you know, band, choir, things where we have big groups of kids. So he promised us guidance and playground usage during the school day, guidance on those areas, July 3rd. Because once we have the green light on that, and once we have some parameters, then we can start planning. Now, we're working in the transportation committee, which I sit on that one. We are working on lots of scenarios. We have lots of ideas. It'd be premature to share all of that because really, what I want to present to you is the plan that we hope to have once we know what we're allowed to do, what we're at. We've, we've, as a, as a county, we've all kind of agreed that August 1 is our deadline. August 1 is, you know, the health department's saying that those that are sharing your plans now, I don't know if you've seen in the news, a couple of schools. He said it's premature. He said they will have to go back on those plans. He said the health department's there, and some of them he has connections with, are even saying it's probably premature. And he said, I'd rather everyone just wait. Let's get all the information. Let's watch the numbers and then let's make a decision we can live with. Not that it might not have to change, or we might not have to have those three models that I discussed in my communication. So the plan will be to continue with our planning committees. We'll be ready to go with multiple different models. Once we know for sure what we're allowed to do and what the parameters are, we'll begin to work within that. In the meantime, I'll continue to share out, you know, biweekly with the community updates and kind of letting everybody know where we're at. I do think we have to be prepared for, no matter what happens, there will be people that will not like the decision, what we're doing. The one positive I will say is that we are absolutely going to, if we go with coming back, we will offer an online option so that our families that are not comfortable with that, and that seems to be a consensus among the county. We don't currently know, Tan and Tanya are working on different programming costs. If it's not cost effective, then we're gonna look at what can we do ourself. So we're, we're actively working on that and how we can make that happen for those families that, you know, whether they choose because they have a mentally frightened child, or whether they just choose because they don't, they're not comfortable sending their kid to school. So I'm hoping that that will take away maybe the extra group of individuals that if we had come back aren't in support of that idea. So that's kind of where we're at in a nutshell with everything we're working on. And I'll continue to update you weekly, you know, in the board reports as to what's happening in a little bit more detail, but.
Is our present custodial staff gonna be, is it sufficient to do additional cleaning or anything? Then are we gonna have to look at staffing?
That is a very good question. I don't, I don't think so. I think we're gonna have to reconfigure and look at how we use them, current routes, what we're doing effectively, what our daytime custodian does. You know, in the hybrid model that we, we did put out a teacher survey, we had, I think about 215-ish, give or take. So 240 teachers, a great amount. We asked them for their opinion on a two day on, Wednesday off. Then the next group comes for two days and Wednesday's a cleaning day, cleaning day, et cetera. Or if they wanted to rotate by weeks. Those are the two proposals. It was about 75, 25%. They wanted to do the two day model and for various reasons, they were allowed to comment. So if we come back full goal, we're going to have to have really very well executed plans for cleaning, which we are working on in the facility group. So I, I don't think so, not yet. I'm not at that place to say, I think we need more staffing. But if I don't feel comfortable, or we as a group don't feel comfortable making a recommendation to the board to say, this is our plan and we feel like it will be cleaned to the level it needs to be, then obviously we'll have to take a look at.
Cause that was my other question with busing. I'm assuming the cleanliness of the bus is the responsibility of the bus driver?
It is.
So.
Now, we did talk about that in the transportation meeting and there actually is a pretty, there's a significant gap. I mean, it is smaller for some, but it's, it's fairly large where they would be able to even clean the buses in the midday route after they load off the secondary and before they pick up the elementary where they sit up at the high school.
Okay.
There are going to also be exceptions. The health department is working on exceptions to allowing, you know, cleaning supplies to be readily available. Obviously, certain ones previously that are allowed around children, not because they're, well, for example, he said, you know, Lawrence Wipes, we don't like them sitting out. Cause a kid could, I don't know, eat one, I'm not sure what. But regardless, he's saying they're working on exceptions for cleaning supplies. So I do think we'll be okay with the bus drivers. I feel pretty confident about that one, that we have a good plan.
We were going to have to hire additional custodians either with the new four, five opening up. It's, you know, a hundred thousand versus 55,000.
Right.
So there's gonna be a lot more clean anyway, so we want to add an entire one or two more anyway for that reason.
Yeah, but that's just that building.
Just with general concerns pre-COVID-19 with some of the cleanliness issues in our buildings and grounds. I would echo John's concern or question even.
And, and, and we are discussing that, putting plans together. So we'll have to see where we're at and what that looks like. We, there, it's gonna have to be clean, like clean. They're gonna have to do a good job.
Absolutely.
Very important to, I think, our families.
Absolutely.
Not just custodians, we are, we should be looking at equipment.
And classroom.
That makes the process faster. That's what we're going to do. So you're gonna come and get spray machines or something.
The airlines seem to be able to do that after every flight.
And I don't know if I said food service. Did I say we have food service?
You said that, you did.
Cause we're looking at efficiency for that too, so. Is there questions?
I was just gonna say, I think maybe it would be helpful in the next community communication to maybe include some of those dates.
Sure.
That you were talking about, like.
Just so they know what's coming.
By 7:3, we're gonna learn this information, which will help us to better develop it. By 8:1, we will, we should have a, I mean, you could still leave it as should and, and what, but.
No, I think that's a good idea.
I think people are just like, when, 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 you know, and it, I know for me, when I have a date, I feel like, okay, I can, I can be cool. I know it's coming.
Yes.
The week of whatever.
I, cause I've seen, read some comments on social media as well, where people, they think we have information that we don't have.
Right.
Have that yet. The governor hasn't given it. The school, the, you know, the local entities haven't given it. So kind of maybe doing a little outline of that would be helpful.
Yeah, because everything I've heard was, is, well, well, the governor said the kids could go back to school. It's up, it's up to you. I'm like, no, it's not. No. I'm like, no, it's not. I said, the guidelines are totally not gonna be up to us. There's gonna be, that's gonna be the issue. I said, the start date is what the man said, the start date.
Columbia City Schools just delayed their start until September 8th or 9th. So the teachers are still going back on the same day, but they're having two weeks of PD. Kids are not coming back until September 8th or 9th, after Labor Day.
And, and the, the purpose of the PD is for like.
I've not heard. This plan just came out this week.
Okay, okay.
But going back to our, our plan with food services, my other question, and this may be a bit preliminary to ask. But if we were to do a model where kids are two days on, two days off, are we still going to be able to feed all kids every day?
Well, so that's interesting you bring that up because I don't sit on a food service meeting, but that actually happened today. And that was one of the, so Cindy, food service director, she obviously sets up other groups too. And so it is going to be by law, they're saying we will have to feed all, whether you are here or there. So that, you know, I definitely know, it's my understanding that she was, you know, anxious about that, trying to figure out how that'll work. So yes, the answer is we will have to feed kids.
Okay, cause my.
Not that we wouldn't want to, but yeah, by law we have to.
Right, that's what I was curious about. And if a parent were to choose the complete online option, we would still be able to feed that child as well?
I would assume so. I'm guessing if they chose that option, it would maybe be on their responsibility to.
To come pick up.
Like it's similar to what we did in the fall, in the last quarter, I'm guessing.
I just wanted to make sure we were covered.
And, and just to kind of wrap your mind around that, so you can think about it as we go forward in the plan. If, if what, what we're, conversations we're having and what I'm reading about, is if we do offer like an online option and you chose that for your child, you would be committing to a semester because it is, it's gonna be extensive planning to go into both online and regular schooling. And you know, I know the teachers are already anxious about that because I know they're thinking, well, how am I going to do two jobs in essence? And we're, and we're gonna try to take care of that on our side of things, but we would be asking for a commitment from those parents of a semester.
Cause that was my other question, if we would have to. Cause that was my other question, if we would have to staff a teacher online, right?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to figure that out. We don't have those answers yet.
No, you're good, my mind's just going.
Oh, trust me, yeah.
I can't imagine.
That's how our minds are going as well, so, but I, I do think, I'm anxiously awaiting, and I think all of us are, that July third deadline, because I think. Once, once you give us those parameters, once you tell us large groups and transportation, we can go. We, once we know what we're working with, we'll put a plan together to effectively educate our kids.
I was asked to bring up also some training for parents, oh, this online thing has been an issue with. Parents not knowing how to get on and.
Sure.
And help their kids out and stuff, so just to throw that out.
Yeah, that's a good idea as well.
And it would have to be tailored to the individual teacher, because I do, I, 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 at least from my experience with my elementary kid. Different teachers use different platforms.
We're not gonna be doing that moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah, if we have a, some sort of hybrid model, that, that was too complicated for our families. Way too hard, especially for those that have multiple children, in multiple grade levels, in different buildings, you know, they couldn't figure out which direction they were headed, so. That unfortunately was hard.
There were people on Facebook, some teachers did something completely.
Yeah.
Off the wall, and makes the rest of them look like, well, they don't know what they're doing, or didn't do the same thing, so it needs to be. Everybody's doing the same thing.
I think, you know, given how quick everybody had to come together and figure it out.
They did great, they did amazing, yeah.
Provide them with a little bit more parameters and structure and help, yeah.
Just saying that, they all, all be singing out of the same hymn.
I agree, Roger. So, yeah, that will be one platform, it will be one district platform.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's very good, excited. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions? We need a motion for adjournment then.
So moved? Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, passes, we are adjourned at nine twenty-two.